Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Special Meeting and Regular Workshop. The council thanks you for being a part of our city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action on specific items and during the workshops, only discusses issues with no formal action taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. So with that, will the clerk take role?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Torres.
Present.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas is excused, I believe. So six present.
Thank you, and I'm going to lead us in the pledge before we conduct some business. Okay, so let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
Do the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, so moving on to section four of the agenda. But before we get to four, we have three A.
So, Madam Chair, temporary chair. We do have the deputy mayor on the line. I had the opportunity to speak with him earlier, and he's online attending the meeting. But because of logistics and trying to run a meeting remotely, an in-person meeting running, running an in-person meeting remotely, and the fact that he is not in the meeting because he's not feeling well, he'd asked that there be someone else chair the meeting tonight. So this can be a really formal process under Robert's rules, or it could be everybody shakes their head, yes, we want this council member or that person to run the meeting. So typically, what would happen in a situation like this, and I am no parliamentarian, but I've run into this enough in my career that I've seen it done. And there would be nominations as to who would chair the meeting. And you, as the temporary chair, would take nominations, and then the council then would decide by a vote of those nominated who runs the meeting.
Thank you. So I open up the call for nominations.
Yeah, Chair Roach. If I could, I'd like to nominate Councilman Serrano to chair the remainder of the meeting.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry for my tardiness, as always happens with children. There was a big boom as I ran out the door, and that caused me to reverse course. All is well, more tears than blood or anything. Well, no blood, so definitely more tears. All right, with that, do we have any verbal reports from any council members?
I do.
Councilwoman Roach, and then Councilman Campos, please.
Thank you. So on, gosh, Tuesday night? I went to the Visit Tri-Cities T-Bex closing evening. I think it was on Tuesday night, Thursday night. Okay, Thursday night. So that was at downtown Pasco, and beautiful evening, great event hosted by Visit Tri-Cities. It was their traveler blog expo in the closing evening. I did not go to the previous evening's event, which happened to be in downtown, not downtown Kennewick, but over, kind of like the Clover Island, yeah, the Wine Village, which I heard the weather was terrible. It rained, there was wind, tables were knocked over. So we really hit the jackpot on Thursday night with good weather. Pasco High's dance team, as well as, and Councilmember Torres helped me with the pronunciation.
Baila folclórico.
What is it?
Baila folclórico.
Baila folclórico. That's right. I kept practicing, and I still butcher it. The dancers were amazing. They were graceful, beautiful. The food was good, ambiance was great. It was, yeah, it was a good night, so.
I do apologize before Councilwoman Campos goes. I realize I pulled up the wrong agenda. We do have a special meeting. I hope that's, do we call that one the order before I entered? So that's, all right, I apologize. Thanks for correcting me, city manager. So with that, we are on item four of new business, which is item Alpha A or, item A or Alpha. It's a public meeting and resolution setting date to consider a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Eichmeyer Roundy Annexation. And Director White, I believe that's going to be you to kick us off.
Yeah, thank you, Temporary Chair Serrano and council people. This annexation involves a considerable portion of our new urban growth area. An intent, two intents to annex were received from two separate property owners in the area. They represent just a little bit under one-half of the total assessed value that you can see in the shaded green. The staff intent is to contact all the property owners in the urban growth area, the UGA, to determine interest in the annexation, future annexation, leveraging the interests that the signatories have with the 10% petition. There is some urgency in this process as legislation was passed this past legislative session that makes annexation a bit more difficult in circumstances, particularly the ones Pasco is experiencing right now with our urban growth area under appeal. And upon council approval, assuming that happens, you'll see the formal resolution to accept the annexation at the May 2nd council meeting.
Thank you. With that, do we have any comments or questions from council either here or remotely?
I just have a quick question for Director White, and I'm just looking at the couple maps here. But there's kind of an odd blue boundary line at the north. And then to the northwest, it seems like it kind of pokes out like in a triangle fashion. Just kind of wondering why the oddity in boundary.
I have kind of a long answer. But if you look at the last exhibit in your agenda packet, it's a little bit more clear on what the colors represent. But the urban boundaries that are shaded in the blue line that look odd, they represent farming circles. And, but they don't represent parcel lines. So often, the parcel lines included more property that was part of an ongoing farming operation. So the farming operation was excluded. That portion of the parcel that wasn't in a farming operation was included, which is why you get some of the circular and triangular shapes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments either here or from the internet? With that, hearing no comments from council, can I get a motion, please?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 4171, setting 7:00 PM, May 2nd, 2022, as the time and date for a public meeting to consider a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Eichmeyer Roundy Annexation.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or question from council? Hearing none. I believe we can do this one via voice vote. We don't need a roll call, correct? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Councilman Milne did, any opposed, nay? Councilman Milne, I did not hear you. I heard Maloney. With that, I'll just, I'll say this is passed unanimously. With that, we can adjourn this special meeting. And I will now get back into the other agenda and call us back into order for the city council workshop meeting. We have already gone through the roll call, as well as the call to order, and the Pledge of Allegiance. So we were back on verbal reports from council members. We heard from Councilwoman Roach about folkloric dance that I cannot pronounce in Spanish, so call it folkloric English dance. And Councilman Campos. What I see from the city manager and from our city attorney, probably missed something.
The city attorney reminded me that you technically need to be re-chaired for this meeting as well.
Okay. So, well, so then do I have to temporarily, and then we have to, so do we have a nomination for a temporary chair here?
Nominate.
Oh, permanent?
So you're the temporary currently.
Okay.
You were the permanent of the last meeting, but this is a whole new meeting.
They just rolled me in temporarily, without a vote. All right, fair enough.
So can I make a nomination? Okay, so I nominate Councilmember Serrano to chair?
Second. All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor of me permanently chairing this meeting, at least permanently through the end of today? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Now we will go back to where I was, which is we've covered items one, two, three, and four, having had our wonderful Pledge of Allegiance. And half of our, or a portion of our verbal reports will move on to Councilwoman Campos with his verbal report on her item four.
Are we sure? Can I go, Dave, Eric? Just real quick, we got a letter in our mail last week about some traffic regarding the US 12 and A Street. Councilwoman Torres was kind of bringing that up to me. I revisited that. I remember I had my Good Roads meeting last week, and I don't want to apologize if I slept since then, but I believe we discussed, I know we discussed Highway 12 and A Street and some concerns about traffic, but I believe, I can't remember if it was Commissioner Mullen or the gentleman from WA DOT that explained that right now that actually is going to probably see less of an impact than we think, and right now there's no major improvements planned for that. And so I'm trying to revisit that to make sure that my memory serves, but I want to answer the mail to make sure that we can at least discuss it. And if anybody else is concerned about it, I can get it out there. But for right now, my recollection serves. It's not a concern right now, because again, I believe the impact should, it's not going to be as severe as we think. So that's kind of good news if that's accurate. I don't know what that's based on, so that's kind of another thing we want to, if they're just anecdotally saying, well, we don't expect it, I want to see if they've done surveys or vice versa. So that's basically it. A lot of stuff was covered, Good Roads, more of the same. Eastside's not really seeing a lot of money. We looked at ways to maybe improve our voice in the legislature, but that's it.
I just have one quick update. I attended Downtown Pasco Development Authority meeting last Thursday, and right before T-Bex, so I was also there. And they have rolled out the schedule already, so check out their Facebook page for all the events lined up for Cinco de Mayo celebration. They also have a parade Saturday morning, so you definitely want to attend that. And also Sunday, they have some great artists showing up to perform. Thank you.
Anything from Councilman Milne or Maloney?
Not at this moment.
Thank you. I will say that last week, and I know I didn't catch this last Monday, but last Saturday, I attended the Men's Expo. I thought that was a pretty cool event. Actually caught wind of it from a coworker and then heard it like as I was driving there on the radio. It was a really fun event, and it wasn't just a men's expo. My kids came. My kids rode the mechanical bull. I was pretty proud to see that. No one was injured again. Probably more tears than real pain. But I had some fun doing that and hitting some golf balls. So I appreciate our community. As we're coming out of these COVID regulations and impacts, we're starting to see more events, and especially like with the spring and summer finally kicking off. It's really fun to be back out in the community. So again, to those who set that meeting up or that event up, thank you very much.
Just have one more addition to make to Councilmember Torres's announcement of Cinco de Mayo on Wednesday, May 4th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, is the Fourth Annual Cultural Night. And on the agenda for that evening are several groups, which I'll just list here, but Mariachi Halcon del Rio, we have the, I'm not, I'm actually not going to pronounce this right at all. So I'll just say Hawaiian cultural music, Mexican folklore, Native American cultural, Colville tribes. So we'll be seeing performances from several different groups. So people can make it there. Should be good. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, we will roll into item five, our discussion items, and we will start with item A, which is the 2022 Washington State Legislative Session Update. It's going to be presented by our wonderful team from Gordon Thomas Honeywell, led by Brianna Murray. Do you have something that you'd like to kick us off with, Mr. City Manager or Mr. Lincoln? Or if not, I'll...
You did such a great job of announcing Brianna. That's what we were going to do, so.
Good evening, council. I'm Brianna Murray, and I'm joined by Holly Cochi. We're with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs and you're a state contract lobbyist in Olympia. This evening, we're hoping to provide you with an overview of the 2022 legislative session that concluded in March. We're going to review some highlighted legislative issues. This evening, we certainly don't have time to go over all of them, so just the highlights, and identify some next steps on where we think things are going. So to begin with a broad overview on the 2022 legislative session, I want to remind you of the context. The 2022 session was a short 60-day session. The legislature operates on a two-year cycle, and it was the second year of that two-year cycle. Democrats held the majority in both the House of Representatives and the State Senate, and strong majorities at that. All bills that were introduced in 2021 automatically carried over for continued consideration in 2022. Additionally, 1,049 new bills were introduced. That's a lot of bills that were under consideration in only 60 days. Of all those bills, 303 passed the legislature, and of those, the governor vetoed six. If I'm doing my math right, that means we have 297 Washington state laws. In addition to the policy bills, the legislature also tackled the supplemental budgets. The legislature has three biennial budgets, an operating budget, a capital budget, and a transportation budget. The biennial operating budget funds all state agency operations. From the conclusion of the 2021 session to the beginning of the 2022 session, they experienced higher than originally anticipated revenues due to significant economic growth, as well as an increase in federal funding. This meant that the supplemental operating budget, which tends to be a more lean budget, was actually quite robust and resulted in a total budget, once amendments were made to the biennium of $63 billion. They did hold about $812 million in reserves and did hold back some federal funds. The capital budget is funded with bonds that are paid off by a percentage of the operating budget. And it also operates on a biennial cycle and funds public and nonprofit construction projects throughout the state. The supplemental capital budget was more in line with what we see as a traditional or historic supplemental capital budget. It was smaller than what we would see in a regular budget year or the first year of the biennium. It totaled about $1.5 billion in appropriations, and of that, $62 million was allocated for local and community projects. To demonstrate that that is a smaller budget than what we see in the first year of the biennium, by comparison, there was $250 million allocated in 2021. Transportation was where all the fireworks occurred. We have very limited revenue available within the biennial transportation budget. The legislature did adopt a partisan developed transportation package called Move Ahead Washington. It's a $17 billion investment package over 16 years, utilizing a $2 billion transfer out of the operating budget, funds from the Public Works Assistance Account, funds from the newly enacted Climate Commitment Act, federal funds, and a slight increase in fees. Of the revenue that was generated, about one-third went to transit, alternative fuel, electric ferries, rail, and active transportation grants. That's pretty much coming out of Climate Commitment Act funds. And then two-thirds of the revenue was dedicated to maintenance and preservation, new highway projects, fish barrier removal projects, and backfilled funding gaps that began to exist on connecting Washington and other existing projects as a result of supply chain issues. That leads us nicely into beginning to talk about some of your specific legislative priorities. One of the top items you all had identified as a priority going into the 2022 session was a need for investments in Pasco-related transportation projects, including the US 12 and A Street intersection that was referred to earlier this evening, as well as the Sylvester Street Bike Ped Overpass over 395. On our legislative priorities, there were four different projects that we identified. Despite working with our legislators to have those projects submitted and highlighting the benefits of those projects for the other side of the aisle, investments in Move Ahead Washington predominantly, if not exclusively, occurred in districts represented by Democrats. And unfortunately, Pasco did not meet that criteria, meaning none of the projects that were outlined on the legislative agenda received funding. Instead, the legislature did allocate funds to several new and existing grant programs where the city can compete for funds at a statewide level. This includes $80 million for the Transportation Improvement Board, including $10.3 million that will be made available this year, as well as an increase in funding for safe routes to schools, the Wash Dot Bike Ped Program, and the creation of a new program called Connecting Communities. As we look toward the future, there continues to be a great deal of statewide demand for transportation funding. Not only did Pasco's projects, not only did Pasco's projects remain unfunded, but many other projects throughout the state remained unfunded. Additionally, while there was significant funding dedicated to state preservation and maintenance funding, there was very little funding allocated to cities and counties or programs to support cities and counties for maintaining the local road system. So I expect to see more conversation on transportation, both around the remaining unfunded projects and local preservation and maintenance funding. Moving on to another one of your legislative priorities was around public safety. You'll recall that in 2021, the legislature enacted a slate of police reform bills, numbered just over a dozen different new laws. Those bills went into effect throughout the legislative interim and leading into the 2022 session. And it was very clear that there was ambiguity and unintended consequences as a result of that slate of police reform bills. In 2022, the legislature revisited those policies, had a robust discussion, and enacted three additional changes. The first one was House Bill 1735, which clarifies that officers can use force for what has been commonly referred to as community caretaking functions. What that includes is civil and forensic commitments, so involuntary commitments, behavioral health commitments, taking minors into custody, following court orders, and enforcing warrants, amongst many other things. The second bill is House Bill 2037, that provided a statewide definition of use of force, and notably indicated that an officer can use force to stop a person who is actively fleeing an investigative hold, a temporary investigative hold, or a Terry stop. And so that enhances law enforcement's abilities to conduct their work. And finally, the legislature enacted House Bill 1719, that clarifies that shotguns, which were previously defined as military equipment, can be used to shoot less lethal alternatives such as bean bags and rubber bullets. Under the bills from last legislative session, shotguns were not able to be used for any purpose. In addition to those three bills that did pass into law, there was a very robust discussion around when it is appropriate for officers to engage in a vehicular pursuit. In 2021, the legislature indicated that an officer can only engage in a vehicular pursuit when there's probable cause that a specific crime has been committed. That was a difference from reasonable suspicion. The legislature had that debate once again. The Senate approved a bill that would have really, for the most part, changed that back to reasonable suspicion, but the House failed to approve it. We anticipate that that issue will be discussed in coming legislative sessions. One of the messages that legislators heard loud and clear was the challenge with hiring new police officers and filling vacancy. It responded by increasing the funding for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy to ensure that officers that are hired can receive timely training. $8.7 million was allocated for 19.5 classes in 2022 and 23.5 classes in 2023. That is the highest level that the academy has received in funding since I've been advocating for the community. And finally, the legislature did allocate $2 million in funding through the Association of Washington Cities to set up alternative response teams or crisis response teams to look at alternative policing methods. In addition to those high-level legislative priority items, I wanted to very briefly cover some additional issues. State shared revenues, which you've heard me talk about before. These are revenues in the operating budget that the state collects, but then shares a portion of with the city. Those were all maintained and even slightly increased. Additionally, the legislature provided $1.4 million to the Municipal Research and Services Center for public bidding technical assistance to allow you all to ensure that you're able to bid for and get the best product at the most cost-effective manner as we go about spending public dollars. There's a robust discussion on appropriate land use authority that you all have. There were proposals that would have preempted your authority on the zoning of duplex, triplex, and fourplex, and required you to provide that citywide or near transit stops. And also proposal that would have preempted your authority to regulate accessory dwelling units. Both of those failed to pass after a great deal of discussion. The legislature did enact changes to the Open Public Meetings Act. You all now have the ability to declare an emergency locally in order to hold your meetings in a virtual format. So for example, if there's a snowstorm and you all aren't able to get to City Hall, an emergency can be declared locally for you all to switch to that format. Additionally, you are now required to accept public comment anytime a final action is being taken in a regular meeting. And if an individual requests for the ability to comment remotely, then you need to do all that you can to accommodate that request. The, moving on, there was a proposal to make changes to the State Voting Rights Act. And we, due to, in part, the city's advocacy, failed to pass. It would have subjected the city to a significant amount of additional process and costs, and attorney's costs in complying with the changes to the State Voting Rights Act. Some good news for the local business community. The legislature enacted Senate Bill 5980, which provides a BNO tax exemption for any business with gross revenues under $125,000. But unfortunately, our request for them to extend the .09 sales tax credit for economic development funding did not pass into law. So a bit of a mixed bag on the additional legislative issues, but some good news is buried within there. As a reminder, lobbying is a year-round effort. Over the interim, we are going to focus on preparing for the next legislative session. 2023 will be the beginning of another two-year cycle, which means it will begin with a long legislative session. Between now and January, the November 2022 elections will occur, and they will occur based on new legislative districts that were established through the redistricting commission. We are expecting some type of a political shift to occur. Right now, there are very strong, Democrats have strong majorities in both chambers. We expect their majorities to lessen. Lessen to what degree remains uncertain. The legislature will meet for pre-session committee days in September and December. And I can't believe I'm going to say this, but the legislative session in 2023 begins on January 9th. Feels like we were just there. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I want to, though before turning it over to you all, just give a huge, great deal of gratitude, thanks, and appreciation to your city staff, your city manager, deputy city manager, and all the department directors. Worked very hard throughout the legislative session to review various legislative proposals, prepare one-pagers, and really answer all of Holly and I's numerous emails to ensure that we could be effective advocates on behalf of the community. Your legislators, we're also great advocates. The 9th and 16th District legislators... Um the ninth and sixteenth district legislators that have represented you all for the last decade. Um continued to pay a great deal of attention to the city of Pasco, we hope that continues. And we saw a lot of involvement from the eighth district legislators and also unalso several of the fifteenth. Um so um feeling good about the transition in legislative districts and the engagement that your legislators are demonstrating. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, as always, that's a wonderful presentation, Brianna and Holly quietly behind you. Um I no comments for me at this point, any other questions or thoughts or comments?
Yes, this Councilman Maloney.
Yeah.
Yep, Brianna, just to echo um um Councilmember Serrano's uh earlier comments about um your effectiveness. And and the great work you do for the city of Pasco, just definitely want to echo that. Uh and then I'd like like to remind my fellow council members that um I have been appointed to the Legislative Affairs Committee for the W for Association of Washington Cities. So please, if you have anything that you'd like me to bring up or other items that you wanna pass on to me. Please work with Adam Lincoln to help just disseminate the information so we can stay uh you know. Uh fully in compliance with any laws, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Maloney, and also thank you for taking your time away from your family to uh serve on that committee. Uh again, thank you very much for the work that you do and it sounds like there are no com- uh comments or questions at this time. Are you are you all taking off right after the meeting?
Um it I'm I'm participating in your next presentation, but I'll just say it's a pleasure to advocate for you all.
Okay, thanks. With that, we will move on to item B and I will, that is. The Broadmore Tax Increment Finance Financing Presentation from Rick White. And this is regarding receiving tax increment financing, presentation, overview and introduction declaring councils. Intent to form a tax increment area for the Broadmore site. So with that, apparently I see the city manager's light on and then it'll go to Rick or whomever.
So good uh good evening again, Mayor and Council. This item, as the mayor mentioned, is to review a tax increment financing proposal related to the Broadmore area. And uh just a little specificity to that, north of one eighty two and west of Broadmore Boulevard. So that's an area I think most in the community are pretty well familiar with it uh. Almost entirely undeveloped at this point in time. Not in twenty twenty one, the legislature, after about twenty five years of effort on the part of cities. Passed legislation authorizing tax increment uh financing in Washington State. Uh a great tool for uh Washington State and one most other states already had. Uh council received a presentation uh from the Port of Pasco on their TIF earlier in the year. Uh regarding uh related to the Ryman Industrial Center, so you are somewhat familiar with the the concept already. But we're gonna learn much more about specifics of uh tax increment financing this evening. In the presentation and its potential application to uh to Broadmore. So the city's been working with uh Mr. Stowe up here, who's standing at the lectern. Uh Bob Stowe of uh Stowe Development and Strategies. Uh Bob's been helping us on um implementing initiating uh strategies associated with development of Broadmore. Uh he's been involved in a lot of the negotiations with uh some of our underlying uh. Uh let's say interested parties uh up in that area. And uh in spin and in pursuing the city's economic development goals and interests. So of late, a lot of Bob's time and staff's time has been spent uh with uh an analysis associated with. Uh the use of the TIP new TIP legislation as a catalyst for development uh up in the Broadmore area. Uh certainly council's done some things with uh introduction of sewer into the area, a sewer L I D. Um how we go from here really will depend on, will really impact the quality of what happens up there. The difference between uh gas stations and uh. Uh what do you call it, mini storages and high quality retail development. That'll that'll provide jobs and opportunities for our community for decades to come, so. This evening, Bob along with Brianna Murray of uh Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Uh will provide council a brief overview of tax increment finance uh as a tool. Uh discussion on the economics associated with the the potential Broadmore uh T I F. And we'll walk through the proposed resolution, uh which is when it was in your packet uh. And then talk some about the next steps associated with this potential effort, so with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Bob Stowe.
Thank you, your city manager did a great job, I felt like I should just say questions at this one.
And questions, yes.
Just for your record again, my name is Bob Stowe, Stowe Development Strategies, I'm a community and economic development consultant. I help um cities, um tribal governments and some higher education, their projects and trying to bring their dreams from um uh to fruition. I'm also working on a number of tax increment financing projects across the state, um along with Brianna Murray. And also with Morgan Shook of Eco Northwest and we'll be able to introduce Morgan uh to you at a future meeting. Um so I'm really delighted to be here with you tonight to talk about tax increment financing. And how will allow the Broadmore project to advance from the planning stages to actual construction. Providing for additional housing options, providing for retail, office space, um generating jobs. Um and creating revenues and really place making for the Pasco community and the region. Tonight, again, we're gonna provide you with a brief overview and as your city manager mentioned, I know you've already had. Um some familiarity with this process, given that the Port of Pasco has provided a briefing to you on on their TIF project. But we also want to introduce you to the resolution that would be declaring your council's intent to form what's called a tax increment area. Which is a part of the tax increment financing process, collecting those property taxes, those local property taxes from that area. Which are then used to finance and fund the improvements necessary to support the land uses and development within that increment area. No action is gonna be requested of you this evening um with respect to that resolution. Um that resolution is scheduled to return to um your agenda for on May second. And Brianna Murray, as she mentioned earlier, is gonna be uh joining me during the presentation, she's gonna be providing an overview. Um of tax increment financing, I'm gonna return, talk more about the proposed resolution, the Broadmore development, tax revenue and the next steps as well as project schedule. Brianna?
Good evening again, Council. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to provide you with an overview of tax increment financing. Before I dive into the specifics on the slide, what I want to do is connect this for you with our previous legislative activities. So your twenty twenty one legislative agenda had tax increment financing. And the Broadmore development and assistance with the Broadmore development from the state highlighted as one of your top legislative priorities. I took that direction very seriously and on behalf of you all, as well as several of my other clients. Was very involved in advocating for the passage of tax increment financing at the state level. Uh the tax increment financing that we have in Washington State is very carefully constructed in order to ensure that it is constitutional. That it doesn't have an impact um on on taxpayers, that it is not an increase in taxes in any way. Um and that it it is an effective economic development tool. So I'm excited to go into a little bit more detail on one specific bill that I had the pleasure of working. On behalf of uh you all and advocating for. Oftentimes, we just get those one line overviews and this evening I get a chance to go a little bit deeper with you all. So as a general rule, um TIF tax increment financing captures property taxes that are generated. From the increased assessed valuation on a site that results when private development follows from public infrastructure investment. Um and one thing that's very important about the Washington State law. Is that it is only focused on local property tax levies, it does not touch the state property tax levy, which was one of the reasons we were able to get the bill passed. It's a tool that's available to cities, counties and ports, as you all know, Port of Pasco has already utilized it, now you all have an opportunity to utilize it. Um it's a very powerful powerful economic development tool, it is designed for a specific project or site. Um a lot of the other economic development tools that exist in other states are a little bit more on spec. Like, oh, we're gonna put infrastructure in this area and hope that a private development will come. That's not really what this tool is designed for, this is designed more for, you know the development that's gonna occur. You know the specific public infrastructure that's needed and you're able to say. The private development would not occur occur but for the the public infrastructure investment. And that but for test was really important. Let's hear, um I'm gonna move on to the the next item, we'll just keep moving here. Um so a a few things that I wanna highlight for you all that made it so that House Bill eleven eighty nine could get across the finish line in twenty twenty one. In previous years, tax increment financing had been found unconstitutional for three reasons. One, it was a gifting of public funds, two, it violated the uniform property tax rate clause. And three, it reduced funding to schools. By not having the bill applied to state property tax revenues, you no longer have an impact on schools. Um by insisting that the revenue be spent on public infrastructure, you avoid the gifting of public funds. And we've carefully crafted it so that the property tax levy rate that's paid within the increment area is the same as that paid outside the increment area. Which means taxpayers in either location are not paying any more or less. So how do you get revenue if you if all the taxpayers are paying the same amount of money, how how where does the money come from? Um this slide really does a good job of demonstrating that. If you have an undeveloped site, it has an assessed valuation of, let's say, six million dollars and then you apply your levy rate to that undeveloped site. It's gonna generate about twenty eight thousand five hundred in local property tax revenues. However, if you're able to invest some public infrastructure into that site, which then spurs private development, you no longer have a vacant site. You have a developed site and that developed site has a higher assessed valuation. You apply your levy rate to that higher assessed valuation and it generates significantly more revenue. In this case, it's five hundred and seventy four thousand seven hundred and fifty. Um so you're not really paying a a higher tax rate, you are paying, the developer is paying more taxes. But it's because they actually have something on the site and the assessed valuation of the site has increased. But they're paying the same levy rate as any property taxpayer in the city. And the property taxpayer in the city isn't seeing a change in their rate either. The revenue that's generated can be used.
Can you just stop for one second, because I think this is one of the most critical slides. Specifically for, I mean, quite frankly, as I glanced at it, took me a couple of times to read it and reread it. And I think for those who are less familiar with the public, I think if we can just stop again and just restate the central theme here is. You're assessing at the same levy rate. But you're assessing at the proposed valued, it's it's almost an evaluation measurement, right? And it's only for those sites that are being developed. So if I live a mile away, it's not gonna impact me because I'm not benefiting from the infrastructure. I'll benefit from, you know, the Costco coming in or whatever, but I won't be paying anything different because I'm already existing. And I want, I just want to make sure that the public hears that, that that again, what we're looking at is a tool for those who are coming in. And assessing uh and evaluating the economic impacts of their of their projects. And basically, the levy is going to be based on that assessed valuation, right?
Correct, the is increased assessed valuation on the site is what is generating the revenue. There's no change in the levy rate and if there's no change on the assessed valuation on a property, whether it's in or out of the increment area, they won't be paying any different.
Thank you, I I appreciate that, I just, again, I think it's really critical that we hit that home and make sure that the public understands what we're talking about here. Not that it's a new tax or, you know, I mean, we don't want the wrong takeaway, so thank you.
Correct, yeah, I don't think if it had been a tax increase or a new tax, it would have passed the legislature. The revenue that is generated can only be spent on public infrastructure, it cannot be spent on private development. Again, this is important to getting around the, you know, the the constitutional requirement that it can't be a gifting of public funds. So you have street and road construction, water and sewer system construction, sidewalks, parking, dock facilities, park and ride facilities. Park and community facilities, these are all things that would be publicly owned and utilized by anyone in the public, um not specific to a private development. So getting into the mechanics a little bit, if a jurisdiction wants to utilize tax increment financing. Um the city can only have two active increment areas per city that you are sponsoring. Um which means within a county, there could be two sponsored by the port, two sponsored by a city, two sponsored by the county. Within the county, there are several cities, so within a county, there could be many more than two. The county could only sponsor two, the city can only sponsor two. The increment areas may not total more than two hundred million in assessed valuation or more than twenty percent of the total assessed valuation of the sponsoring jurisdiction. Once you outline the public improvements that you plan to fund with the revenues, you cannot change. That list of public improvements, nor can you change the boundary of the increment area. So my advice would be to make sure you get it right the first time. Um when you you do, one of the things the legislature was concerned about was making sure that the tool wasn't used. And then um was just sort of, these increment areas were be cre- being created and then it was just sitting for a long time. So there is a deadline by when the public improvements must be constructed, that you have to begin construction, you have to start turning dirt. Um you can only receive TIF revenues for the period of time necessary to pay for the cost of public improvements. So let's say magically, all the public improvements come in way underbid. And it's costs a lot less to construct them than what was anticipated with the increment revenues. You would not collect the full amount of increment revenues. You would collect only the amount that is needed to fund the public improvements identified in your initial ordinance. Um and um regardless, the increment area has to be retired no more than twenty five years after it is adopted. The way that it works for each taxing district is each taxing district will collect their levy. Which is the amount that they collected their previous year plus one percent plus new construction. Plus they will apply the levy rate to the increased and assessed valuation within the increment area. So really what we're doing when you calculate your overall property tax levy is we're just pulling off the difference between that undeveloped site. And the site that has development on it, taking that incremental difference and applying the levy rate to it and collecting it separately. So the city, um that can be done with the city's levy, the county county's levy, the port's levy, any of the local levies. Um the new construction that occurs in the area is still added to each jurisdiction's levy as it is currently. Um that does not change, it is only after it is considered new construction that it then is added on to the formula. You're limited again to the amount that's needed to pay the public improvements that are outlined in the ordinance. Um and um let's see here, and if you and if the increment area generates more revenue than is needed. Then that revenue is allocated back to all of the taxing districts where it is generated from. There is a requirement in the statute that you submit a project analysis to the State Treasurer's Office. That analysis has to include the boundaries and duration of the increment area, a description of the private development. Including a comparison of what that development would look like if there was no public improvements funded. Um so if there was no increment financing used, what would it look like? Um an estimated amount of the public improvement costs, the estimated amount of bonds or other obligations that are going to be issued. An assessed valuation of real property within the increment area and an estimate of the increment value and tax allocation revenues to be expected. In short, you're providing the Treasurer's Office with all the analysis to show that it's a financially sound decision. And that's what they're gonna be evaluating and providing you feedback on. Um estimate for the job creation um that is intended to re- that is anticipated to result from the private development. And any impact or necessary mitigation to ensure there's no negative impacts on affordable or low income housing. The local business community, local school districts or local fire districts. Um there is a special requirement if twenty percent of the assessed valuation of the fire district is within the increment area.
Brianna, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um in the duration of time, is there a cap on duration of that the TIF can?
Twenty five years.
And who is doing the assessment valuation on behalf of the city, for example?
Yeah, the County Assessor's Office is the um entity that goes out and assesses the value that each property holds. And they do that currently, um so they go out and they say, okay, from you, you know, right now, if you have a vacant piece of land and then you build a home on it. It's gonna be the County Assessor's Office that goes out and says, previously this vacant lot of land was a hundred thousand. Now with a home on it, it's now valued at five hundred thousand. Um so the county assessor plays that role of determining the valuation.
The future evaluation.
The yeah, the future evaluation as far as like how to um rely on. How to generate how much bonds to issue and everything is what you have Bob and Morgan for, they provide that analysis.
Gotcha, thank you. Right, Bob?
Um one more, one more piece here, there is required outreach, you have to hold two public briefings exclusively on the project. Submit the project analysis to the State Treasurer for review, as we've discussed, publish a notice in a public newspaper. And you have to provide a notice to the County Treasurer, County Assessor and the governing body of each taxing district where the increment area is located. This is a new law and so a lot of these entities may not be as familiar with it as they will be in, say, ten ten years from now. And you all are benefiting from the fact fact that Port of Pasco has already gone through this process. So several of these entities won't be seeing tax increment financing for the first time. But there's a certain amount of education effort that goes along with utilizing this new law since it is a new concept and and something that's new on the books. We've kinda talked about this already, there's really no impact to the taxpayers and the developer pays the same levy rate as they would pay otherwise. They're paying more because the assessed valuation of their property is. They're paying more because the assessed valuation of their property is increasing, but they're paying the same levy rate. And I think with that, I am going to turn it back over to Bob to walk you through how all of that as an overview applies to the specific scenario you have before you. Any questions before I turn it over to Bob?
Thanks, Brianna. So based on the work we've been doing with your city staff and with Broadmore Properties, we have developed a proposed resolution for you. And that proposed resolution declares your intent to form what's called, again, the tax increment area from which to collect those local property taxes that would then finance the public improvements that are necessary to support the development in the first place. And in the resolution, as you've read your packet, there are many recitals, as there usually are for resolutions. And that establishes the benefits of TIF, the benefits of of how it will um energize and 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 help your economy, provide for for jobs, um, and really kind of create a place, a special place in the Broadmore area that could not occur without the public investment. So the purpose of the resolution can really be summarized in these three bullets. One, it directs the city manager to develop a TIF program for the Broadmore area and prepare ordinance for council consideration to form the tax increment area in accordance with state law. Now, a little later on, you'll see our schedule, and we'll talk about that. The ordinance is not gonna come back to you, or it's not scheduled to come back to you until September. So we need to do some additional work in the project analysis, but you'll get that ordinance back um in September uh following the adoption of a resolution that is scheduled to occur on May second. Supports the identified preliminary TIF infrastructure projects and recognizes that those projects may be refined as part of the city's tax increment financing project analysis that we're gonna be going through. And then finally, really initiates the preparation of a comprehensive tax increment financing analysis and review of the state for to be reviewed by the state treasurer's office. Again, once that project analysis is done, it's submitted to the state treasurer's office. We're planning on doing that in um in September. The state has ninety days to review that plan, provide any feedback. Council will have to consider that um that feedback if there's any, and then you'll be able to prepare or consider an ordinance moving forward with the tax increment financing. So again, no action scheduled for for tonight, um, but that was the resolution that you have in your packet, or at least the draft resolution, will come to you in a final form and um scheduled for action on May second. So this is a a map of the Broadmore development. You likely have seen similar maps of this. Um, what you see here is twenty four parcels um that are available for development within the Broadmore area, plus the parcel that's illustrated as um parcel sixteen, which which is the the gravel pit, and that's under lease um for that use and operation for the next five years. So that's not um identified at the moment now for any kind of redevelopment potential associated with TIP, but the other twenty four parcels are. The red parcels are commercial, larger retail office space. The light blue is mixed use, most likely would be retail on the bottom floor with housing on top, whether it be three, four, five, um, six stories. Um, and the the green is multifamily and the yellow is single family. So there's some, there's some significant development that's being planned in the Broadmore area. Um, there's also some significant um um infrastructure requirements for the Broadmore area. There are some um purchase and sale agreements that have been entered into with with by the property owner of Broadmore Properties and some developers. There's also some letter of intent that have been um issued between the Broadmore properties and and developers, and there's also just some interest expressed. And so there's almost four hundred and forty acres of of gross available acres um in the Broadmore Broadmore development. And we've been working on this project. We've we've been able to identify the key infrastructure projects that are necessary to support all of those different land uses. Um, and there's a lot of info on this map. The dotted lines represent, the dotted lines, the green represents all the infrastructure projects that we've determined would would are are preliminary TIF projects, are preliminary infrastructure projects, are streets, are roads, or sewer, or the storm, um, et cetera. Those are projects that are most, that are likely outside of the developer's capability um in financial viability to actually perform at the same time as providing for the actual development uh based on market conditions, um, the cost of construction, et cetera. The 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 infrastructure projects that are outlined in green are those infrastructure projects that would be funded and constructed by either Broadmore Properties or the developer that purchases the property. An interesting note on on this map is that there is close to close to twenty four point three acres, there's actually twenty four point three acres that will be dedicated uh to the city just for the TIP projects. And we believe that will have the value, the average value range between five point two million and ten point five million in project benefits. So I mentioned that these projects, the the infrastructure projects were preliminary. They're preliminary because we still need to do a project analysis to make sure that these projects truly are those that are outside of the developer's capability to perform them. Again, that's that but for analysis that was identified by Brianna earlier. Um, but the resolution is also important to identi- to identify these preliminary projects because we want to be able to provide some some level of certainty and subjectability for those who are looking to develop in the Broadmore site. So they know what the what types of projects the city is considering would be financed and funded um by TIP. We mentioned that the, once a tax increment area is formed, that the levy rates of those participating jurisdictions in 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 Pasco's case, it's the city, the county, and the port. All the other um levies are not eligible. The state schools and the the voted levies for the schools are are excluded. So that arrives us to a levy rate of just over three dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed valuation. So that's the levy rate that gets then applied to the assessed valuation that gets created within the tax increment area. And based on sort of three different development scenarios that we've been able to identify for the Broadmore area, we've come up with an aggressive uh program schedule, a moderate schedule, and a conservative schedule. Uh, the aggressive schedule over a twenty five year period would generate seventy million dollars in revenues that then could support infrastructure improvements. And these are, again, these are preliminary revenues that need to be refined and updated um as we go forward with the project analysis. The moderate um, the moderate scenario would generate forty three million dollars over a twenty five year period. We picked twenty five years only because that's the maximum length that you can uh um a TIF can exist. And that's also the maximum length that for any sort of debt financing that under TIP that you would you would pursue. And the conservative analysis was thirty two million dollars. The difference between the aggressive and moderate was really just a matter of reducing some of the scope of the type of development and the timing. As to when, you know, the the absorption rate of multifamily units, or how much commercial uh space can the market absorb over a period of time, over that twenty five year period. And so that's the difference between aggressive and moderate. The the conservative estimate is based on what's likely that we expect to occur just when the first five years only. So not even looking at years six through uh twenty five, just looking at if only development that occurred in the Broadmore areas with just that within the first five years, what type of revenue stream might we receive over that twenty five year period, and that's a thirty two million dollar figure. Let me go back. There is a, there was a a blank in your resolution that identified the project costs associated with infrastructure. And these are preliminary costs with contingencies. Um, we believe them to be within a range of eighteen million and twenty five million. That excludes the the um interchange improvements. If you also include that, that's another five million dollars. So you're likely, you know, twenty five to thirty million dollars is sort of the projected kind of planning level costs that we've identified um at the moment uh for all those infrastructure improvements that would be falling within the TIF infrastructure project categories. So at least based on our sort of really high level analysis, you 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 have enough revenue stream to be able to support the infrastructure projects that are identified um on the map. Now, there's, there's obviously more taxes that come to you than just property taxes from TIP. Um, any new development will generate sales taxes both one time for construction revenue or from the construction and then ongoing sales tax revenue, uh utility taxes. That development will have rippling effects throughout your community, creating more jobs, more more revenue streams. And so it's it's just important to recognizing, recognize that the development is gonna be more significant than what we've indicated here in terms of the property tax revenue. And more than that, it's gonna create a a special place for your community to enjoy, to live in the shop. So our next steps um as part of the project analysis is to, one, finalize the tax increment area. Right now, we've simply drawn it around the Broadmore Properties ownership, that four hundred and forty acres. Um, we'll we'll evaluate the benefits and advantages of 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 reducing that boundary as well as enlarging that boundary. Again, you can't have a boundary that's larger than two hundred million or twenty percent of your assessed valuation at the time that you form the district. But it's vacant property, so I think gives us quite a bit of latitude in terms of how you draw that boundary. We want to refine the 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 projected development program. You know, how much residential is gonna occur in the first several years, how much commercial development, so on. Look at different scenarios, run some sensitivity analysis to make sure that whatever debt that you issue, you it's gonna be backed up with a really high level of confidence of your ability to achieve that revenue stream going forward. We want to reach out to affected taxing districts. As Brianna mentioned, this is a new law. And not all the taxing districts that might be affected by this understand how TIP might benefit them. Again, you're you're only able to take the revenue from the from the TIA, the tax increment area that's necessary to support infrastructure improvements, but the the development itself may raise much more. And when it raises much more, that simply benefits all the taxing districts then, not just the the city of Pasco. Um, we'll prepare the project analysis that includes some of the same things that are identified in Brianna's um part of the presentation. Um, we'll look at, again, the kind of the but for analysis. But for the public investment and but for the public infrastructure improvements you're doing, this development would not occur. And we'll show what that development might look like without the public investment, and we'll show it, of course, with the public investment. We wanted to refine the description of those improvements, you know, the cost, um, as well as the estimated amount of the bonds that you might be issuing. It's anticipated that you'll probably issue, um, you know, LTGO, um, general obligation, um, non-voted bonds, um, tax exempt bonds in order to finance um this twenty five to thirty million dollars of public infrastructure that will, again, provide a a much higher return on that investment over that twenty five year period to you. Um, we want to refine the assessed value of all the real property, looking at, you know, the construction costs of what the developer is gonna pay and that how that might translate into the assessed value increase of the property in the next year and then twenty five years out. As well as then estimate the job creation that's reasonably expected to occur um from the long term private development, the vertical development, as well as the public infrastructure investments that you're making. Um, we'll do, we'll assess any impacts and then mitigating those impacts against the affordable and low housing, low income housing, local business community, local school districts, and local fire service. Fire service is provided by your your community, your city itself, so that's not necessarily applicable. And but some cases of the fire district, there may be an impact that you would need to negotiate and provide mitigation for. We'll help you develop a financing plan associated with your debt and structure that debt um within the boundaries of the TIF legislation, providing you as much flexibility as possible so that you can achieve maximum revenue and 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 maximum comfort in terms of your ability to pay um the debt service associated with that infrastructure. There likely will will be an agreement that we'll want to have with Broadmore Properties. There is a letter of understanding that exists now between the city and Broadmore Properties. We will likely want to memorialize that in an agreement so that both parties know what the other parties are responsible for with respect to the infrastructure investments and the timing of when that infrastructure will occur. Since we're all relying upon everyone's part in order to really develop um a a a infrastructure plan and foundation out there, if you will, for private development to occur. We'll also manage the public briefings, the tax increment financing formation ordinance, and then help you with implementation. And I know this was in your packet, and it's really too detailed for you to really examine here in a in a presentation mode. But there's a, I just wanted to point out, there's a number of sort of activities that occur um as part of that project analysis, that really comprehensive analysis to make sure that we're able to uh able to identify the infrastructure improvements that are really necessary to support the the development and a plan for you to sort of capture that that revenue and then put it to good use. And with that, I'll end and address any questions that the council might have.
Thanks, Bob and Brianna. Do we have any uh questions or comments here?
Sure. Um, I guess one of the questions I have is just the the what if? So, you know, what if it, the revenue is not realized in that twenty five year period of time? I don't plan on being here at this dais or in this position for twenty five years. Um, maybe some of the staff won't be here either. So how do we, how do we measure that? And and hopefully, I mean, I'm I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer here, I'm, no offense, Debbie. Just, you know, thinking about, we we may get to it in ten years, a decade, right? I mean, that's a possibility too, but so what if on the other end of it? Um, that twenty five year mark comes, and we haven't made that conservative uh revenue projection.
You mean you overestimated your revenue?
Um, underestimated.
Underestimated the revenue projections. So I mean, that's always a possibility. That's why we've looked at and will continue to look at several different um development models. We won't simply take the the full development um that will occur within the first five years, we'll phase that out. And again, sort of run some different variations of that so that we have a high level of comfort that your debt service that you're gonna be issuing, that that you're gonna be issuing for the bonds, um, is you're not maxing out what you really anticipate you're gonna be receiving. The other is that um we'd advocate, um, you know, a backup plan. Um, what happens if the development doesn't happen, or what happens if not as much occurs? And so we might focus on one or two developments that we know are moving forward um as a result of the infrastructure investments. Maybe the operating revenue that they would contribute towards, you know, sales tax or other taxes can be used at least during the the interim period while the development is 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 occurring. Um, so it provides you a little bit of a cushion um that you can utilize other revenue sources. Because TIP doesn't, even though you're you're utilizing TIP revenues, the the bonds that you issue, they're not gonna care, and they're not gonna dictate where the revenue stream comes from to pay back those bonds. And so you want to create some just safety nets for yourself, um, maybe some other revenue streams that you can have a high confidence level that they are going to occur and that you don't issue any debt for twenty five to thirty million until you have some of those backup plans in place. So those would be the ways that, one, be conservative in your development program. Um, you know, not not issue seventy million dollars of debt, don't max it out based on what you think the development is gonna occur. Be much more conservative of that, and then have a backup plan so that you have different options that can occur over that twenty five year period. You may have during the first year or 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 first several years of the tax increment um process, you may have to fund a little bit more of that debt service from other sources um until development gets up and running. I mean, development takes, you know, a couple of years for construction, then it has to be operational. So you have some interim financing concerns, but I think that'll more than pay itself back um over the life of the twenty five year period. On the opposite end, if you're able, if you can construct the ordinance to give you sort of maximum flexibility as to when you might call the bonds. Most bonds have a call date where you can refinance them, pay them off in ten years. Um, you might be able to do that in order to collect higher revenue based on the the generation of 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 TIP property taxes being collected or being generated in that area.
Well, I'm hopeful, um, and it's exciting to do something new. I'm curious too, is this TIF in Washington State fashioned after something uh that other states have done? Or is this innovative for Washington to come up?
Yeah, Washington was really the sort of the the last person to the party with respect to TIP in the nation. Um, I think there's maybe only one other state that doesn't have tax increment financing. Washington is one of the last few states. Um, and Washington's TIP law is unique to it in that it's, you know, it excludes the the school levies and the state's property tax, and it was really sort of designed not to harm any of the existing taxing districts in that they'll continue to sa- receive the same revenue. In some states, you know, the TIP revenue is is provided to the developer directly. It's not necessarily a public improvement uh project, but it's provided to the developer directly as a as a sort of a rebate after the public improvements are developed. Um, so there's all different variations, and I think by design, our legislation wasn't designed like other states, which gave maybe a bigger bang for for the buck, if you will. Um, it's really designed to provide uh lower amounts of of revenue and likely wouldn't be the only source of revenue for many projects. Um, this project is unique in that you've got a huge opportunity for development and a lot of development. That's the reason why you're able to generate the thirty million, the fifty million, the seventy million dollars of of property tax revenue. But in many communities, you know, with the the levy rate in a much smaller area, they're simply not able to generate that much in terms of 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 infrastructure um um support. So in many cases, it's really designed to really be a stop, uh, you know, gap funding um and likely have to apply some other funding sources along with TIP in order to make a project work.
Well, thank you for answering those questions.
Yeah. City manager?
I I just wanted to note the significance of this. So we we heard a lot tonight about uh TIP as a tool and its potential for leveraging development. You know, pretty large and significant area of our city, uh, several hundred acres of undeveloped land, geographically located in the center of tri-cities, an area of over three hundred thousand population. an area of over 300,000 population. I'm thinking back on other opportunities the city might have taken in the past. And the only one I could really think of that's comparable to this, although it really wasn't a TIF, was the process water reuse facility. You know, 30 years ago, the city out of nowhere decided to take a risk along with the port and PUD on that project. And that project was instrumental to Pasco being established as an agricultural hub. It spurred hundreds of millions of dollars of private investments, which continues today. Thousands of jobs, tens of millions in payroll are infused into our local economy annually. This proposed TIF is, I think, is this city council's process water reuse facility. It is the modern-day equivalent. It holds the potential to be as equally transformative and historically significant for the community. And I'm not trying to sell you on it. I mean, this, you know, we put a lot of work into this analysis, and I appreciate the work Bob and Brianna put into this, as well as a number of other staff and some other consultants. I think it will solidify Pasco as a major retail hub in the region. It's going to generate hundreds of millions in private investment, just like the process water reuse did. Thousands of jobs. It'll be a community focal point for shopping, culture, and entertainment. A major sales tax generator. And I think it allows, one of the things I'm particularly excited about, because certainly we've seen some very excellent commercial development in our community along Road 68, but I think one of the difference being, this allows us the potential to, excuse me, construct a transportation network that'll support the development early in the process and avoid some of what the community's experienced in other commercial areas in the city. I think it'll be planned, it'll be sized properly. And I think that'll help this community in accepting this project. To keep this moving along, though, we're going to need next week the passage of the proposed resolution that Bob reviewed with you. And our plan would be to bring it back next week unless there's concern by the council. But I think one of the things we've heard all along as we've done the Broadmoor EIS and master plan, we've talked about Broadmoor and other aspects, and that is, we want to avoid another big traffic snarl in our city. And that's what we're trying to accomplish with this. This generates enough revenue to make those things happen now so that we're ahead of the curve when it comes to traffic and growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
This is Councilman Maloney.
Yep, just going to just get to you, Councilman Milne. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. First off, I am very much in favor of this approach. You know, one of the questions we always get asked is, if you saw it coming, why didn't you plan for it? Why didn't you build the infrastructure? The short answer is, we couldn't. We couldn't afford to. There's no money available to do that. And this provides us that money. So just to City Manager's point, I definitely see the benefit here. But for staff and the consultants, what infrastructure are we looking at? When I look at the map, I'm seeing basically roads and pretty much exclusively roads. Is that all we're looking at doing with the TIF financing? Or is there, what other sort of examples of infrastructure might this pay for?
Yeah, that includes, where those roads are, it also includes the utilities associated. The, excuse me, the city-owned utilities, so water and sewer, storm drainage. Where there's the wider segments, that's those that involve curb gutters, sidewalk. And when I say sidewalk, it's, you know, it's the walk path, it's the wider, the landscaping, those kind of things that would allow for bike pad mobility.
Great. And I think I heard earlier as well that there was discussion of potentially paying for some of the upgrades needed for the interchange at Broadmoor. Is that something that's within the scope of what the TIF can pay for?
That is within what the scope, that is within the capacity of the TIF to pay for.
Awesome. Okay, last question. So we know we're running into some major needs and we had considerable conversation at our council retreat about the need to support our, you know, affordable housing and subsidized housing, et cetera, you know, for people who are homeless and at risk, high risk of homelessness. Is this, I assume this is a stretch and probably is not possible, but is this something that the TIF could pay for as well as anything supporting, you know, any of those other needs in our community that we see as high priority?
Yeah, affordable housing is a component. One of the public infrastructure improvements that were up on the screen when Brandon was reviewing that, supporting affordable housing, contributing towards affordable housing through, you know, nonprofit or through another, you know, city organization is possible with TIF as well. We haven't factored any affordable housing contributions in from the estimates, but certainly we can look at that. There may be also developers that wish to pursue affordable housing as part of their projects in addition to any market-rate housing that they're going to be promoting.
Great, I appreciate that. I missed that at that point that you made. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Maloney. Mr. Milne, anything from you?
No, great discussion, but I have nothing to add at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have hopefully one quick question. Looking back at this presentation, it addresses two public briefings exclusively on the project. Is there any timeless issue, timeliness issue with a resolution that predates those two meetings, such as taking action next week?
No, the resolution is not, this resolution that you're, that we're proposing to you doesn't interfere with that timeframe and it's not required. Again, we think it's important in order to give some predictability for people who are looking to develop in the Broadmoor area and also to provide some direction to the City Manager to continue forward with the TIF analysis. So the public briefings will be a part of the process once we have the project analysis completed.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure, since that's, you know, it's kind of, it's a decision that's not a decision. You know, it's a high-five kind of in writing, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't any, you know, out of line at all in that manner, so.
Not alone. If anything, you're doing, by the fact you're holding this meeting, it's a public meeting, you're doing more than what's required.
No, I appreciate that, and thank you for giving us kudos quietly there. With that, if no further comment or questions, sit here. We'll move on to item C. Thank you for that wonderful presentation, Bob, Brianna, and Holly quietly. We'll move into item C, regional wayfinding and gateway project. It's from Angela Pashon, who is not Angela Pashon, I'm guessing, as a gentleman's walking up.
Hi, Council. Good evening. I'm actually online tonight. And then walking up is Jacob Sevigny, our project engineer for this project. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. All right, next slide, please. So tonight, we're just going to, we're actually here to present a regional project that's getting started here in Pasco in the next couple of weeks. And regional wayfinding is a program that establishes a structure, management, administration, and maintenance of all components of the wayfinding system. And that advances and promotes a region's identity, makes it easier for visitors to find their way, and enhances visitor experience. Next slide, please. Here in the Tri-Cities, we did complete a collaborative effort for wayfinding and gateway signage, and that resulted in what's called the Merge Plan. And that Merge Plan established the policies, design criteria, graphic standards, and site locations for our regional plan. And it is a multi-layered program. It's amazing how much signs can actually cost. So it was designed to be able to be implemented in stages. Let's see here, next slide. I'm going to hand it over to Jacob here in a second, but we are just about to kick off the preliminary phase. And the city gateway and regional gateways were what all cities agreed to start with. So I'm going to let Jacob cover our construction and the bidding process for this first phase.
Okay, thank you, Angela. Like Angela said, my name is Jacob Sevigny. I'm an engineer too here with the city in our CIP division. For this project, we decided to, moving forward with the available funding, we put together a base bid of three signs. And then based on the amount of the bids, we included two additive schedules, so two separate signs individually, based on how the bids came back to allow us to be able to just move forward without waiting for funding to do all of the signed projects. So like Angela said, we're moving forward. We had a bid opening on March 29th, from which we received three bids. In that process, our lowest responsible bidder was Ray Poland and Sons, who had actually done a similar wayfinding project for the city of Kennewick. So again, the way that the estimate had come out at about $294,000, our budget available was less than that. So we were able to award all three of the schedules, so the three signs in our base bid. And we were able to also include the two additional signs for a grand total of $273,927.21. So we have actually already awarded the project to Ray Poland and Sons, and we are moving forward with the contracting process currently. We wanted to bring this project to you and keep you guys updated on our progress. Back to you, Angela.
Thanks, Jacob. Next slide, please. So within the plan itself, there are 10 monument signs for Pasco. So we're doing five of those, which is going to be really great to see them come to life. So I just, we wanted to provide what they're going to look like in the locations. And we selected the five, because there, one is a regional sign, which we'll get to a couple of slides from now. But what we put priority on was downtown, so how people are getting to downtown. So two of the signs that are going to be actually replaced, so they're going to be replacing our existing signs. One is at the Cable Bridge Park, so just coming right over the Cable Bridge. And then Lewis and 28th will be this horizontal sign. Next slide, please. City Gate 2, taller, you can see kind of scale of a person. I believe that person, I will say six feet, but I could be wrong there. This is going to replace, coming off of the, coming eastbound off of I-182 at Fourth, and then Oregon and Superior, so near City View Cemetery. And then, can you please go to the next slide? So this is the regional sign. And each city within the plan actually has at least one of these located in their city limits. And this is actually going to be coming right out of the airport. So we're going to be the first to implement this. And we're working very closely, obviously, with all the work going on in Argent so that we can get that replaced. So it'll be a great welcome when people are coming out of there. And the next slide. So I will say Brian Cole is actually not with us tonight, but McKay Spazito is working with us on all professional services as well as the city of Kennewick and the city of Richland. So it's been great to work with him, who has been working with the other cities. So if there's any questions, Jacob or I can answer those or get back to you after talking to Brian.
Angela and Jacob, just to register my preference for that last slide in which we saw the Tri-Cities Airport, the Tri-Cities Airport at Argent and 20th in Pasco, I would prefer to say Welcome to Pasco.
Yes, I understand that completely. We are working off that collaborative effort that took place in 2016, 2017. So we can talk with the cities, the other cities that have agreed to this, but I can understand exactly what you're saying.
Thank you. City Manager?
Just one side note on that one, and, you know, that was a, an agreement made at the time among the cities because you're coming out of the regional airport. And so that's going to be on the west corner as you're coming out. On the east corner will be a Welcome to Pasco sign. We sold the property to VJ Patel. We reserved an easement on that corner for the purpose of putting in a sign. So you could have a Welcome to Pasco on one side and Welcome to the Tri-Cities on the other side.
Thanks for the concession.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Milne Maloney?
I was curious, did we, in case I missed it, are there going to be a sign also on Lewis when you come across the Blue Bridge? Are we going to have a sign there as well?
So within the locations, they are included in your agenda packet tonight. There was not one located there. That would be for a monument sign, and Jacob would be able to speak to this probably a little bit better. That would be a very tough location to put a monument sign, such as the ones that you're seeing here. But with this plan, we are able to look at different locations. And that is what some of the other cities are doing, is they're adding additional locations to it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, I can speak to that a little bit more as well. So for this project, we were moving forward with the signs that we already had definitive locations for, that we can move forward with the funding available and get something constructed as part of our agreement with the other cities so that we were all doing this construction, especially because, as we talked about before, when the original design was done, all of the cities combined on the efforts. So there was funding from all the different cities, which is why we have the regional gateway sign showing the different ones, that everybody kind of community, did a community pot. As far as other sign locations, we actually have some evaluation going for different locations. But again, we wanted to move forward. Rather than waiting till everything was designed and going for construction all at once, we decided to move forward with improving the community now. And all of these locations are actually, you can see existing Welcome to Pasco signs, but a lot of them are older, they're weathered. I think one of them is actually looking like it's close to falling down. So we're actually replacing existing signs with these new improved and kind of maybe more modern-looking wayfinding signs.
Thank you with that. Councilman Converse?
Just going back to the comment about having something off Lewis and 20th. I just, with Lewis Street from the Blue Bridge, there's a light pole that's been hit, probably seems like once every six months it comes down. I'd just be worried, and that might be why, and again, Jacob would probably know better, but to me, it seems like it's maybe not an ideal spot for a monument sign because it would wind up getting hit and just taken down.
That's fair, and we looked at the locations, we talked about it with our consultant. We measured the distance based on the MUTCD, the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control. And we've had conversations with WashDOT. And we've just, so we've done our due diligence and we've had some concerns, but I will take a note of that and I will reevaluate that again. So, thank you.
Thank you with that. And if no further questions or comments, I'll make one quick one. I know Councilman Milne has been a strong champion of lighting downtown, recognizing this doesn't exactly constitute that. But to the extent that you're going to place strategically in downtown or other areas where lighting's poor, this may be an opportunity to shine a little bit of light and bring a little bit of visibility to the signage. And I also recognize these are visible from cars, but it'd be wonderful to have like a QR code connected with Visit Tri-Cities. I'm sure that's probably too far down. You've already received your bid, you've done your design work. I just constantly think of the way technology's moving and people, although they're not supposed to be doing it, I'm sure they'll snap a QR code. And it'd be great to have that whole Visit Tri-Cities, and I'm sure they'd love the plug. But anyway, probably too late, but to the extent that things change, might be worth contemplating.
And I'm sure Angela can probably speak to this more, but I know that's something we could look at future. And I also, I think we forgot to mention that we have had the Arts and Culture Commission weighing in on the design of some of these other future signs in the downtown area. So trying to get that input, but we will, yeah, I'm not sure the logistics of that. I'm not a technical expert by any means, but it's something we can always consider.
Appreciate that. With no further comments, appreciate that presentation. And we'll move into item D, D as in Delta.
Chair Serrano, we have quite a few more items on here. Can we take a five-minute recess to get stretched for a minute?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll call it, oh, sorry.
It's okay.
We'll call it 8:31 since it's advancing into that and be back at 8:36. We are in recess for five minutes. We are now back in session. It's 8:36 and 40 seconds. And we have five items left for tonight. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to item D, Delta. Resolution, intent to form a sewer, sewer local improvement district, an LID in the East UGA, urban growth area, UGA area. So with that, I'll give it to Mr. Worley.
Thank you, temporary permanent chair for tonight, Councilmember Serrano. It's my pleasure to turn this item over to our CIP manager, Maria Sara.
Good evening, Council. We are here to talk about the East UGA Expansion Sewer LID. As you may remember, in September of 2021, we had a discussion with Council regarding the expanded UGA area and the concept of forming- With Council regarding the expanded UGA area, and the concept of forming two LIDs. In order to serve this area in an organized manner prior to development occurring. This uh, plan for sewer service would include the installation of sewer lines, liftations. Uh, we had just completed our sewer comprehensive plan, which allowed us to understand what type of infrastructure was needed. And this infrastructure would support the organized uh, development of this area with the densities that were adequate. To meet our land use plan. Uh, with that, we have prioritized the East UGA portion. Um, because there is a lot of development interest in the area, there's a lot of annexation interest as well. Uh, as well as the Ryman Industrial Center, which could also be served through this LID. Um, today, our item will include a resolution that declares the intent to form the LID. But does not form it, and today it's just for discussion, this uh, this resolution would come back next week. Uh, should Council desire to, to act on it. Um, and to get started with uh, the rest of the. Information on where our project is, and how we have come to a layout that has been refined. We have with us our consultant, RH2 Engineering, and Ryan Withers is the engineer that will tell us about our design so far.
Okay, thank you Maria. Okay, so as Maria indicated, I'm Ryan Withers with RH2 Engineering. Um, we are tasked for now, um, evaluating the feasibility of providing sewer service in this area. And potentially forming an LID. So as Maria indicated, the landowners within the yellow highlighted portion of this figure, in the north to northeastern portion of the city. Have expressed some development interest, and the desire for utility extensions to serve their development. Um, specifically providing sewer service in this area is somewhat complicated, due to its proximity to available. Connection points in the city's collection system that actually have capacity for flows for an area of this size. I'll go into that in another couple of minutes here. Um, but given that complexity, the city has begun to explore the feasibility of an LID in this area. Um, to provide a sewer backbone, and that backbone allows wastewater that's generated in these yellow parcels. To be conveyed to an area where there is capacity in the existing sewer collection system. Cost analyses were prepared as part of the city's comprehensive sewer plan, um, between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. To evaluate providing sewer service um, in the existing developed areas, south of these yellow highlighted parcels. And the cost analysis indicated that it is significantly more um, cost effective to move this wastewater to the east. Um, as will be shown on this next slide. So with that, I'll take the next few minutes to describe the property owners in this yellow highlighted area, the plan. At this time, to provide sewer service to those customers, the costs associated with those improvements, and an upcoming schedule. Uh, this slide uh, shows a more zoomed-in view of those yellow highlighted parcels, along with landowner names. Uh, those names hopefully show up a little bit better on your screen. Um, and then there is, just to note, an inset for the Dairy Gold parcel in the top right of this screen, as well as a couple of other smaller parcels. Within that inset. And then an actual tabulation of those landowners is shown on this slide. Um, for the landowners that are included in those yellow highlighted parcels from slide one. Um, as well as some other details about their property, parcel number, acreage, those type of items. Now in terms of actually providing sewer service to this area, um, the city's comprehensive sewer plan identified the. Improvements shown on this slide, um, there's significant portions of Gravity Main, two lift stations. Um, ultimately conveying all of this wastewater to the east, east of the BNSF railroad tracks. And ultimately conveying down existing collection system routes in Industrial Way and Capitol Avenue. Um, this is obviously a lot of improvements, and as I alluded to, um, sort of as part of the introduction. There is existing collections, collection system. Um, shown in, in the green lines, the green piping essentially south of Burns Road. Those lines just flat out do not have capacity to convey wastewater for an area of this size. So, the cost analysis I alluded to is to, or um, considered tearing up. Road thirty-six, road fifty-two, multiple roadways, a single one, and chasing that all the way down. To essentially Sylvester Street, and then east, under the Blue Bridge, and all the way to the city's wastewater treatment plant. As you can imagine, excuse me, as you can imagine, that is quite a distance, quite an impact to, to traffic. Um, almost all of that area is already developed, there's roadways there. Um, that is very expensive to tear up those roads and replace the existing sewer infrastructure in that alignment. As opposed to what is being proposed here in the city's comprehensive sewer plan, which includes. These improvements taking place largely in un- currently undeveloped areas. Um, another benefit to not just uh, moving all this wastewater to the east. Is that the city's Ninth and Washington Lift Station. Um, it pumps the vast majority of the city's existing wastewater to the city's wastewater treatment plant. And that Ninth and Washington Lift Station essentially takes in. Uh, generally speaking, all of the wastewater west of the railroad tracks in the city. So it is, it is very heavily relied upon now, it's going to be very heavily relied upon in the future as part of additional development. In the western portion of town, we talked about um, some of that development in, in the last presentation, or two presentations ago, I should say. So the ability to move the wastewater in this area, east of the railroad tracks. Um, offsets potential improvements that the Ninth and Washington Lift Station would otherwise have to undergo. And I can say that the lift station on the east side of the railroad tracks, the city's Maitland Lift Station. Has adequate capacity now, has adequate capacity even after full development within this area, that the original yellow highlighted parcels. So it allows the city to improve the resiliency. Um, of the entire wastewater collection system, and that it does not compound the reliance on the Ninth and Washington Lift Station. And the plan to s- for all of these improvements that's included in the city's comprehensive sewer plan. Um, includes improvements that is well north of thirty million dollars. But as the preliminary design has been able to progress over these last couple of months. Um, with coordination amongst landowners, city public work staff, city engineering staff. The concept to serve these, these properties has been able to be refined to the concept that you see on the screen now. Um, this involves significantly less Gravity Main. And the elimination of one of the two lift stations that was originally proposed as part of the sewer plan. Um, that was able to be accomplished with some coordination with one of the landowners, and part of a mass grading, um, that will take place on that site. Um, this updated concept still does convey wastewater to the east, across the railroad tracks, down Industrial Way and Capitol Avenue, and ultimately to the Maitland Lift Station. Now if this concept remains viable, the preliminary estimate at this time is in the twenty to twenty-five million dollar range. Um, so it, every bit of ten million dollars less than the concept that was shown in the sewer plan. Um, as it stands now, we've actually got that shown at twenty-two point seven million dollars, somewhat tabulated here using the. Comprehensive sewer plan numbering system, and then some, some changes as more information has become available. Now in order to pay for those twenty-two point seven million dollars of improvements, um, we have. Reviewed a number of different LID assessment methodologies, um, and reviewed them again with public works, with engineering staff, and with landowners. Um, and as it stands now, a preference toward an assessment that's based on. Partially based on a flow contribution, you know, the flow that each of the parcels, once developed, will contribute through these collection of improvements. As well as the area of each, each parcel. So, as it stands now, the assessments would be based on sixty percent of a flow contribution for each parcel, and forty percent of an area contribution of each parcel. That's shown with the uh, the column that has the orange highlighted heading on the, the slide that's on the screen. And then in terms of moving forward, um, a tentative LID formation schedule is shown here, beginning with an intent to form LID resolution being presented to you. Um, next week at the May second meeting, um, a draft of that resolution is included in your packet. And there's a number of other dates here, um, getting us through May with public hearings, protest periods, um, and so on. Do you want to describe anything else?
Yes, I have a few more points to add to this. So one of the things is just clarifying that our request to Council is uh, the approval of an, of the resolution. That only declares the intent to form the LID, and that allow us to notify property owners of the intent to form the LID. And what their preliminary assessment could be, based on this methodology that we just showed. Um, and then hold a public hearing where we can hear from the property owners. For their support or opposition to the formation, and then make a decision at that time, which is late in May. Uh, whether the LID could be formed. Something that I wanted to clarify was that in the recent past, we've done two LIDs successfully. And uh, the first one that I'm gonna call upon is the LID number one fifty, which built Chapel Hill LID. Uh, there was extension of LID, the connection of LID between, sorry, the connection of Chapel Hill. Between Road eighty-four and Road sixty-eight, if I remember well, the um, extent of that project. And in that case, we issued final assessment roll, which is the final cost to each property owner. Prior to finishing construction. The following LID, we uh, which is a Northwest Sewer LID. We actually did a preliminary assessment, we moved forward with the construction, and. Here in the next couple of weeks, you will see a final assessment roll based on the total cost incurred after construction is completed. Our proposal for these LIDs would be to follow the methodology that we use in the most recent LID. So we would do design, did construction, and once all costs are incurred. We would be issuing the assessment roll, and payments would begin after that. Okay. I think that's everything I have for this, but we are open to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you for that presentation, do we have any questions or comments from Council? Out there in the ether.
Yes, this is Council, this is Councilman Maloney.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, um, so I, I had a question about um, who else will be served by this um, long-term? Obviously, we know the Dairy Gold property is a portion of the Ryman Industrial Center, but there is additional development uh, you know, being planned by the Port of Pasco, et cetera. Um, can you talk to me about the thought process of um, only including the Dairy Gold plant as part of this uh, LID?
Yes, this is Steve Worley, I can address that. Um, the, right now, the sewer is going to serve all the people within the urban growth area boundary. And so right now, the north side of, in uh, Ryman Center is not included in any future. Uh, urban growth area boundary, so we would have to accommodate that at some future time. Uh, and uh, but right now, it's everything within the expanded UGA that was adopted as part of the comp plan.
So if I understand correctly, the capacity might be there, but because of um, our city and UGA boundaries. Um, we're not including areas outside the city's UGA?
Correct, by state law, we cannot extend sewer beyond the urban growth area. And I wanted to clarify my previous comment, this air, this LID is east of Road sixty-eight. Up to the north boundary of the adopted urban growth area boundary.
Will we have a late comer's agreement or anything else that will be in place if someone will, will be, um, you know, again, additional industrial users will come in later to use this infrastructure that's being built?
At this point, no uh, agreement like that is anticipated, given that this is an LID, all the existing property owners. Will be scheduled to pay for the design and construction costs of the sewer.
All right, I guess it's just, just when I'm thinking of growth paying for growth, we know how much the Port of Pasco has been um, able to expand industrial uses out in that area. And that we're building infrastructure to do so, um, I just wanna make sure that growth is truly paying for growth, and we're being fair and equitable to all payers. So it sounds like this is as good as we can do, given the limitations of state law. Um, but I would encourage staff, if there's any way we can, again, continue to ensure that. Uh, future users will be, you know, proportionately paying for this infrastructure that we're building now, uh, that would, I would appreciate that, thank you.
We can certainly do that. Um, if, if, okay, can I ask uh, Maria or Ryan to s- speak just real briefly about the public involvement process so far? Uh, because I think it's critical to the upcoming uh, resolution.
Sure, I can take that. Um, so thus far, there have been, I believe, three landowner meetings that have been held. Where we have essentially workshopped, um, you know, the design, the costs, the assessment methodology, heard. You know, from as many people as we can, of what they like about this concept, what they don't, been able to. Um, evolve the concept from what we saw from the comprehensive sewer plan with thirty-plus million dollars worth of improvements. Down to something that costs ten million dollars less, and is consistent with as many development plans for the landowners. In those yellow parcels that um, that have development plans thus far. So, that is the type of, of landowner reach out and coordination that has been taking place, there is another landowner meeting. On Thursday evening this week, um, where we welcome additional feedback, and we'll be sharing. All of these updated numbers and slides with the landowners at that time as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your call and attention to that. I saw Mr. Baumann give two thumbs up, uh, you know, I, I didn't realize a squeaky wheel had thumbs. Um, but uh, no, it's, it's always good, the one comment that I have, it, it's really kind of a question, I would just wanna assure that. This uh, hybrid of, of charges that were allowed by code to assess valuation that way. I, I know we had a big question about that when we were doing um, you know, the sewer at the, the small portion. But by code, we're allowed to do that, is that correct?
That is correct, we are allowed to do that.
Okay, well with that, I don't think we have any other questions or comment, thank you for the wonderful presentation, and uh, thank you for letting us know that you're already doing the outreach to the public. Which is very critical, uh, uh, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that, we're gonna move on to item E, resolution, uh, bid award for fire station number eighty-five, Street and Utilities Works. Seeing it's only four pages, should be less than four minutes, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try and go even less, um, as Council heard earlier tonight, we certainly are anticipating a lot of uh, development on the west end of the city. And, and in preparation for that, uh, you know, we've certainly identified the need for additional fire stations, and station eighty-five on Road one hundred. Is, is the, is the next candidate up. Um, we broke this project, we don't have the funding for the actual station itself at this time, so we broke this project into, into two portions. And the first portion is just to prepare Road one hundred, to underground the utilities, to relocate a Lumen, Lumen um. Vault that's in the uh, red, you see there on the map, and then to extend um, Maple Street. Uh, to the east, uh, to the back of the theoretical fire station project that's, we have some preliminary design on now. Um, we had an engineer's estimate on this project of nine, uh, nine hundred, geez, I don't have it in my. Nine hundred and some thousand, and bids came in at, or nine hundred and thirty-one, five eighteen ninety-nine. Our low bid came in at one million, two thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars, about seven and a half percent above the engineer's estimate. Um, and, and giving the bidding climate right now, we weren't sure where the, where that was gonna come in, so we feel that's a, a pretty, a good bid. And it's from C and, uh, the low bid is C and E trenching out of Pasco, uh, a company the city's done a lot of work with, so. Uh, we're looking for Council approval, uh, to award this bid next week.
Excellent, thank you Chief Gear, and thank you for the record time, any questions or comments from Councilmembers? Hearing none, uh, Councilman Milney, Maloney, nothing? All right, with that, we will move on to item F, as in Frank, uh, resolution, process water reuse facility. Phase two amendment with RH two. It's uh, noted as Director Worley, but I see Maria walking out, so I'll let someone handle this.
I'm more than happy to turn this over to Maria.
Good evening, Council again, and I will try to be as brief as Chief Gear. But I will answer all your questions. Um, what we're presenting to you is an amendment to the professional services agreements with RH2 Engineering. For the design of uh, winter storage ponds at PWRF. When we started the project, we had an assumption on the volume needed for additional winter storage of two hundred million gallons. As we began the evaluation of the needs, based on new proposed expansion of our existing process. based on new proposed expansion of our existing processors, new processors, the way the facility would be operated, we identified that actually the need for storage was growing. We actually identified up to seven hundred, around seven hundred million gallons of additional storage needed, provided that all the future potential processors were to join us in this venture. So with that, we clearly realized that our parcel that is vacant, it's forty acres next to our existing facility, was no longer enough land to build the ponds as they were needed. And so we started evaluating acquisition of nearby land. We found the, an opportunity with USBR, that is US Bureau of Reclamation Land. So it's federally owned, it's adjacent to the city of Pasco, and they actually own three parcels, two are adjacent, a third one is nearby. It's actually adjacent to our land application site. And we are pursuing acquisition of those parcels for a total of two hundred and forty acres. What we are presenting to you that is related to this is the amendment to the professional services agreements with RH two in order to incorporate tasks that allow us to do more cultural work, biological work, geotechnical work, and survey work. And all of this is tied to the requirements that come from acquiring federal land, which requires NIPA versus the SIPA that we had planned for. The amount of field work has grown because now there is two hundred and forty acres additional to the forty that we're planning on using. And again, part of the NIPA process requires a lot of work related to creating those documents, doing the, all the assessments. And of course, that could not be absorbed in the original PSA. With that, we are presenting the amendment and recommending the approval. And I am here to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from council?
This is Councilmember Mullany.
Yeah, Councilman Mullany.
So if I understood correctly, we're expanding pretty substantially, much larger than we expected. Not to say the storage, but the overall property, is that correct? What are we planning on doing with the additional access property in addition to our storage needs?
Great question. So we are looking at the acquisition of several parcels in order to be able to fit our ponds, in part our ponds. Our most immediate need appears to be actually now coming back down to about three hundred million gallons, but we have the potential of needing another three hundred or four hundred million gallons additional. Plus, there are some efficiencies being achieved by doing the acquisition all at once through this process. The process is the same regardless of, well, I shouldn't say regardless of the amount of land we acquire, but at least below the threshold where we are, whether we acquire forty acres, eighty acres, or two hundred and forty, the process is the same. And then there is also some constraints with some of the parcels that may delay the sale to the city. And so we have a contingency plan where we could build the ponds in the, say, the south parcel, which is really not the ideal location, but may meet our timeline. So we're building some contingency planning by acquiring, looking at acquiring all process, all parcels at once. Hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, that definitely answers my question. I think it's, we know that as the Port of Pasco continues to work on and expanding the industrial uses for ag industrial, we know that we'll need more capacity and we'll need more capabilities and that means more land. So I applaud the effort and no further questions, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none? Just want to note that it's great that this is funded one hundred percent by low interest pre-construction loans and the debt service is by the processors. So regardless of costs, it should not have a detrimental impact to the city's budget. So I appreciate that note. With no additional comments, we will move along, thank you Maria, to item G, ordinance and resolution, budget amendment and Argent Road Phase Two bid award. Don't know if this is Steve, Maria, both, we'll see.
I'd be happy to turn this over to Maria one last time.
Last item for me tonight. We are here to present the bid award for Argent Phase Two. And this comes with a, with an ordinance to amend the budget in order to be able to award the bid. So I will give you a little bit of the history of the project and then explain how we got here. So as you may remember, the city started the Argent widening project as one big project between Road thirty-six and Road Twentieth Avenue in two thousand thirteen. Since then, the project has been phased into three phases so that those projects could, those phases could be accomplished in a stagger manner. Phase one is actually in construction, nearing construction, so we are excited to bring that one soon for acceptance. Phase two has been bid and we are going to talk about bid award today. Phase three is a sixty percent design. Moving on to the right-of-way acquisition phase, which actually is donation of right-of-way by the two stakeholders that are helping us fund this project. And they are CBC and the Port of Pasco. And this brings me to where we are on the budget. So CBC and Port of Pasco signed ILAs, entered ILAs with the city and they provided partial funding for the project. The city is funding another portion of it and we have some federal grants that are helping us fund, especially Phase Three. When the contributions from the private partners first were allocated, we allocated them spread through the different phases. But since then, last year, you may remember, we opened bids for Phase One and that bid was above our engineer's estimate, yet we decided, we, main view, decided that it was a priority to get the project under construction. And so we reallocated funds from the next two phases, two and three, to fund Phase One fully. And that is what is explained, maybe not so clear in your packet, into tables. So with that, the shortfall that we are experiencing right now with the increasing prices, electrical components are much expensive, much more expensive right now, labor is more expensive, we are seeing it across the board. Phase two is experiencing a shortfall. It should have, it could have experienced a shortfall regardless, but I think you're seeing a bigger shortfall right now because we had reallocated some of their originally allocated funds to fund Phase One. So the bid that we received actually is a good bid. It was below our engineer's estimate. The focus on safety in this phase, which is the intersection of Road thirty-six and Argent, was of interest to us and that's why we have moved forward, even though we are seeing that there is a shortfall and we are presenting to you a recommendation to amend the budget using REIT funds. We have checked that there is enough in balance to cover this and have the project constructed starting this year.
Thank you, with that background, with that, any? Mr. Worley, your light's on, is, okay. Sorry, with that, any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Mullany.
Thank you, Mr. Mullany, go ahead. Mullany, go ahead.
Thank you. So I think I'd seen original designs at one point of this being a roundabout and now it's indicating it's a signalized intersection. I don't necessarily have a preference between the two, if it's what the engineers' design and recommendations are. I'm just curious of, has there been an evolution or am I off base in my recollection here?
There has been an evolution. So we, we were not set on either solution. The design actually began with an analysis of what would work best. Both solutions worked. The signal had a longer time of performance, if you want. It seemed like it would work best even with increased flows. And the one deciding factor was that there is no need for right-of-way acquisition. If we do a signal, we already had approval to install the signal. So we gave priority to the timeline versus the configuration. There are some diminished costs when we build roundabouts because there is less maintenance required. But given the number of crashes, there was an interest in moving the project forward faster. Now, the right-of-way acquisition process would have been a complicated one because on either side of the intersection, we have federal land that is, the Gulf Course is actually owned by FAA and has some impact to public use. So the process for acquiring that land would have been complicated as well as encroaching onto the protection zone for the runway. And then on the opposite side of the road, we would have been dealing with washout, which is not likely to allow us to build into their right-of-way.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you, and I actually don't have any questions about Phase One through Phase Three, but I just wanted to ask city staff about Road thirty-six to forty-four and beyond that. So I know you're talking about making pedestrian improvements and ADA ramps and sidewalks up until that point. But that leaves the north side of Argent without a sidewalk to forty-four. So it just, so there's only a sidewalk on the southern portion of Argent then and nothing on the northern portion. So is there any plans, future plans to complete that?
I can't remember if that continuation of Argent project is in our six-year TIP or not. I'd have to go back and look at it. But that would be the way to do it is if we wanted to continue those improvements, we could add it to the six-year TIP.
I just think about, you know, whoever that person is, person, kid, person with disabilities who's on that sidewalk and it's like the sidewalk that leads to nowhere then, where they have to cross to the other side. So just wanna, that's a frustrating experience. So we gotta think about those things too. You already know that, so thanks.
With that, with no more comments or questions, we'll move on to item H, discussion, Barker Ranch Right-of-Way Vacation, that is item VAC twenty-two-two-oh-two. I'll kick it over to Director White.
Thank you, council. And this is an informational item, a heads up, if you will, for city council is next week, you'll be asked to formally set a public hearing date for this street right-of-way vacation application. Of course, staff will analyze the request in much more detail. But it may be that after the analysis, given the current and expected future growth in this road corridor, staff may recommend that the right-of-way remain as it is currently at ninety feet. You see in the agenda report that a principal arterial contains between eighty and one hundred feet. And it may be this development occurs on the south side of Burns Road, we'll be asking for an additional ten feet of right-of-way as well. So the resolution next week will ask council to set the hearing date for June sixth. I just wanted to bring this to council's attention in case there are any questions that I can address.
Thank you, Director White. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none? Sounds like we are done with item five of the agenda. Moving on to, into item six, miscellaneous council discussion, have we any? Councilwoman Roach?
I just wanted to mention to other council members that last week I did go out to the neighborhood who had come to council previous week to discuss the fencing and took a look at that. So just want to say it's worth, I think it's worth taking a look at in person and can really appreciate what's happening in that area if you see it with your own eyes, very different than seeing it in your packet.
And thanks for bringing that up because I also went out there and visited Mrs. Atkins as well. And I happen to know her neighbor very well, but I agree with you on that. Definitely, we need to take a second look at that.
Yeah, I'll echo that and be clear that we were not there at the same time. So we weren't anywhere near a quorum. City Attorney Ferguson, you can breathe. Yeah, you know, it's certainly, a picture's worth a thousand words, but a site visit is probably worth, you know, ten thousand or a million words. And it certainly raises questions as to the effectiveness of the proposed ordinance and the need at a minimum for an exemption exception process, in my mind. So where we end up, I don't know. But it certainly adds context and definitely, I had a lot of questions walking away from the value added of that ordinance to that house. You know, to be clear, not to the whole city, but whether or not there ought to be an exception exemption. Anything else from council and chambers are out there?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Mullany.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just briefly, I want to touch on something that Councilmember Compos brought up during the, during the reports and discussion of, what goodness, what was it, the? Councilmember Compos, I want to revisit that during this miscellaneous discussion. So maybe I should just prompt you and let you, let you discuss it in more detail.
I wish I knew, Highway twelve?
Good Roads, Highway twelve?
Highway twelve, there we go, I'm sorry, I'm a little spacey today, I apologize. Yes, Highway twelve and the letter we received and the impact to the neighborhood over there. Is that something that, you know, that's something I'm really concerned about, the making sure that the Amazon warehouses and the additional industrial development there isn't putting a lot of people that live in, say, Tierra Vida and the surrounding neighborhoods at high risk, as well as given the fact that we already know Highway twelve is already a target area for the state in terms of concerns for safety? Will be the appropriate method for us to discuss this further and make sure that we fully understand what staff has been planning with Amazon and other developers? Can, maybe Mr. Zable would be best prepared to, you know, just how, process-wise. I'm interested, I want to know more, how do I do that?
So if it's of interest to the full council, we can certainly bring back a presentation. If it's of interest to a couple, we could just have a briefing on that. So we are gonna have the six-year transportation improvement plan before council within the next couple of months. And it may be beneficial to have that discussion all at once rather than talk specifically to Am, I'm happy to talk specifically to Amazon, but that doesn't answer all the questions for the area and particularly with respect to US twelve. So it's, however the council wants to handle that. I would recommend a kind of a comprehensive discussion and maybe give us a few more weeks to pull together. I know engineering is working right now, community development's working right now on the TIP update. And I think having the benefit of some of those, at least a preliminary discussion, that might be really helpful to do that at the same time.
Councilwoman Mullany, that help?
I'm interested in the rest of council's feedback. You know, I know it's topical from a standpoint of, you know, we have construction ongoing for industrial, whether a month or two or whatever is, is going to still be timely or not. I'm not sure I have a strong opinion on, so I just wanted to open the discussion.
Okay, thanks, I see Councilman Compos's light on.
Yeah, Councilman Mullany, it's a great question. I don't know if you were able to get tuned in before we did the verbal reports. I talked about it a little bit about how, again, I've slept since our meeting with Good Roads, but I believe it was somebody from either WADOT or it might have been Commissioner Mullin who mentioned that right now, they seem that the traffic impacts at Highway twelve and A Street are less than expected and so there is no real immediate need for improvement there. Again, I could be wrong, but I'm actually tracking that down. I reached out to Chairman Moke with Good Roads to kind of refresh my memory and maybe point me in the right direction. I think it's Todd Trepanier, if I spelled, if I spelled that wrong, with WADOT, who maybe mentioned that. Staff, again, is probably more in tune with kind of some of that stuff that's going on anyways. But, but again, it sounds like maybe the rest of council is probably interested in kind of getting a quick brevie, a debrief on what is or isn't planned in that section of road. So I'll leave it at that.
I mean, from my perspective, we're gonna get a full debrief in two months and understand the, you know, the full picture, a more full picture. I think it's, I'd prefer to wait. I have no objection to you sending an email out, but I don't know that we need to have another, a meeting on it, from my perspective.
Yeah, let me suggest that we could probably be, to council, on that aspect of the six-year TIP, that kind of east segment of the area of the city out there, particularly in industrial area. I don't think it would be too onerous to be able to do that, your second workshop in May. It gives you a little bit of a preview on part of the TIP, but it doesn't require us then to have so much of it done. I know that's an area that's being focused on right now. I had a couple of discussions with city engineer last week about it, so.
I guess I would just say I, I welcome at the TIP. This is, as council, some council knows and, and staff knows, that Highway twelve and A Street intersection has been something for the last two plus years. And then while I was on planning commission, that I've just been harping on in terms of a safety concern of getting onto that highway and heading west. And so I've just felt relieved that we've had it turn into a right-hand only and heading east. But I feel like this is a different aspect of it, is the traffic implications for A Street and the neighbors. And so, um, I think it's probably a starter conversation at the TIP and then maybe something deeper at that point. Cause that, I don't know that it's fully resolved, that intersection of Highway twelve and A Street in terms of what we do beyond just closing down, um, eastbound traffic, westbound traffic.
I would like to share with council some information. Recently, there was a, uh, request put out by our federal legislators for some, uh, requests for federally designated spending. And we approached Washdott with a potential project for looking at that Highway twelve and A Street and Tank Farm Road. And it turned out that as we worked our way through the process, DOT asked for a letter of support from us to support them putting in a request for about one point two million, I think, to study that area so that we could come up with a solution to address all the things that you're talking about tonight.
Okay, so do we have a clear direction, a preference to hear something at the next council wor- workshop? Or just wait the second, uh, again, I've expressed my thought as to wait the, you know, we're talking two weeks. Council, where are we at on that? We good?
I'm waiting for TIP first.
Okay. Sounds like the general consensus, at least here in chambers, is to hold off till, uh, that second workshop in May, correct? City manager? Perfect. With that, unless we have, uh, further miscellaneous council discussion?
Yeah, this is, uh, Councilman Milney. And I just wanted to reiterate that I was really, uh, appreciate that the other council members went out to the Atkins property. Again, as you said, it's so much different seeing it in the packet and then actually going out there. So I just wanted to say thank you for the council members for going out there in a timely manner and I really do appreciate it. So thank you on that.
Yeah, thanks and safe travels from whatever end of the world you're in tonight, Mr. Milney. Hopefully you're not driving tonight with your dear luck. Anything from the city manager's perspective?
Not this evening on miscellaneous.
Okay. Well, then with that, we're going to roll into an executive session, item number seven. And we do have need for an executive session tonight on two items. The city council will now meet in executive session to discuss, one, consideration of the minimum offering price for sale or lease of real estate if there's a likelihood that disclosure would decrease the price per, and so this falls under revised code of Washington, RCW, forty-two point three zero, point one one zero, subsection one, subsection Charlie. And then the second item that we'll be discussing, that's C Charlie, sorry. Uh, the second item we'll be discussing is consideration of site selection or acquisition of real estate purchase or lease if likelihood that disclosure would increase price per RCW forty-two point three, three zero, point one one zero, subsection one, subsection B, as in Bravo. And, uh, council is expected, not expected to take further action and we will be in session for about?
About fifteen minutes.
About fifteen minutes with it now being nine twenty-two, we will be in s-
One, one more comment.
Just, all right?
So, um, on the sale, we need to talk about the factors that we would consider. So staff's recommendation that the factors we consider have to do with the use of the property, timing of development and price.
All right, so we'll be limited to those three items in that, uh, component of executive session. It's now nine twenty-two with fifteen minutes. We will be in executive session till nine thirty-seven. And then we'll come back to close out the meeting. It is now nine thirty-six PM. We have concluded our executive session. And with that, we are calling a close to this workshop meeting of whatever tonight's date is. Thank you for attending.